I have to be, I don't want to get in the business tonight.
So we'll have a chance to dress up?
Not tonight. No. No, we gotta dress all the way. But not tonight. You got no time now. Come on. He is inviting us for each one of us. I saw something everybody says. We just want to speak and keep on moving.
You should be ashamed.
Tell him, Mr. Howard.
You should be ashamed. I was looking for my sheet, Miss Goldman gave it to me. I got it in here.
Good evening. Legal notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alder Persons this Thursday, March 14th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at the City Hall. Called to order, we're going to have a moment of silence as we stand, and I'm going to ask Councilman Shaw to lead us with our invocation, and I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim Moore to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's have a moment of silence, please. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight to discuss the business of our city of Bastrop, Lord. We just pray that you would be with us in our meeting, and, Lord, we just thank you for blessing us in many ways that we don't understand, Lord, but we thank you for it. And, Lord, we just ask that you be with us tonight, and we thank you for all you do for us, and we love you, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Ms. Goldman, roll call, please.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
All present, ma'am.
We have a quorum. This meeting is now in session. Announcements. Councilman Shaw, can you give us an update on the Cleveland Street Bridge?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have information on the Cleveland Street Bridge. It's out of service, and this past week, we did let the contract for that. They'll soon be starting to demolition, and then they'll go back with repairs to that bridge, structural repairs, as well as coating of asphalt on top for pavement. So all this process will take in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 days, depending on the weather. It looks like we have a really good week this week coming up. Hopefully, we'll be started on it, and so we can get this behind us. And anyway, that's just kind of where we are, Mayor.
Yes, and they started with things today. We have a big backhoe there that we had to do a few things to, but we want everyone to not try to cross the bridge and try to use it until it's totally complete. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Councilman. Also, the Martin Luther King Street Bridge, many of you may not know, we had a bridge plan for the Martin Luther King Street Bridge back starting in 1898, and 2018, the state was going to pull that, pull that plan because we had not executed in 20 years, but in 2017, this council voted, I asked them to vote, that we spend about $100,000 to re-engineer the bridge because the plans were in metric and not in the English system. The United States tried to go to metric, but citizens would have no parts of millimeters and centimeters. We wanted to stay with inches, feet, yards, miles, and that kind of thing. So we had to scrap those plans and go with plans because we knew that the bridge would not last, and I had doubts that it would, that it would pass another state inspection, and it did not in December. But we had the plans already, and we had the plan in hand meeting back in July before the bridge closed, and all the councilmen, most of the councilmen participated in that plan in hand meeting, and we have a timetable right now. We're in the property right-of-way acquisition. We did hire a, the council gave me the authority to hire a, a state-approved appraiser to appraise the property, and he is doing that right now. And then we want to have the acquisition of the right-of-ways done by May 1st, the bridge construction, then we're going to let it out for bids, and the bridge construction is slated to start July 7th, if we can keep on the timetable. So this council, if I'm right, gentlemen, help me here, we are not going to spend 80 to $100,000 just to open a bridge up for three, three months, and then it would be demolished again. So we want people to bear with us when we get this new concrete and steel structure there with a nine-foot pedestrian walkway, and it'll be a bridge like we haven't seen of any of our bridges. It'll be the best bridge, but we have to be patient, and I know it's going to, it's creating an inconvenience for a lot of people, but we're doing the best we can.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
It's timeframe, Mr. Prater, is, is, we, March, I mean, May the 1st, we are scheduled to have all of the right-of-way done. That's our schedule. If we stay on schedule, and we hope to have all of the property acquired, we have to pay people for their land that the bridge is going to take. And if we meet that May 1st target, and I believe we will, then it will go to bids right after May 1st, and construction slated to start July 7th. That's what we're hoping. And it's going to take several months to actually tear down that bridge. They've got to do slant, slant pile driving, you know, they take and they drive these, these, these heavy piles, and the bridge makes a, it's, it's, it's a, it's a transversal-type of bridge. It doesn't, the water doesn't flow perpendicular to the roadway, which creates a real challenge for the builders. They've got to drive all those piles to a point of no refusal in order that the bridge will last several of our lifetimes. I hope it'll be here long after we're all gone. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We have another announcement. Some people may have gotten a call testing our code red. Ms. Doris, can you go to the microphone for this announcement?
Yes, Mayor, on, on March 13th, which was Wednesday, some residents may have received what is called an "all-call." This consisted of mass call-outs to everyone in the initial code-red database. The purpose of conducting the "all-call" was to encourage residents to participate and sign up for the code-red alerts, to validate and update current phone numbers, text and email addresses, allow the residents to see incoming code-red phone numbers and store them in their phone as contacts, also to experience how they will be alerted during an actual emergency, as well as testing the system at the same time.
So, right now, people can go to the City of Bastrop website, right?
Right.
And just click on the code-red, and what this is, is a system that, that you'll have an app on your phone, and if there's some type of emergency, like an active shooter or, God forbid, a bank robbery or something.
Boil, boil alert.
Yeah, boil alerts from the water company.
Gas leak.
Then we have the ability that the chief of police can take his cellphone and draw an area on a map, and, and everyone in that area, if you opt in, will be notified immediately. And this is in response to Ms. Lois Jordan, who came for this council, and the council voted to, to pay for this system, and we've gotten donations from, from Morehouse Medical, yes, and one more donation that paid for this first year. So the citizens are not out of any money, but the problem is, we have, we used a database that we had, Ms. Doris took a database that we had access to, and we started out with those numbers. How many numbers?
It was 3266, 3,266 records.
Okay, but the problem with phone records is that people change numbers.
Exactly.
Quite frequently now with cellphones, and...
Mayor, the, the data that resulted from those calls showed that we had 1,153 bad phone numbers.
Yep.
Yeah, so we need, we have the names and addresses, but the phone numbers were actually bad. They were either disconnected or just non-existent anymore.
So what are you encouraging people to do?
Well, we need everybody, all the residents, and anyone that wants to get the alerts within the City of Bastrop, to go to the website and sign up.
Yeah, so...
You're going to click on that sign-up button, it's going to ask you for your information, and you're going to put email, text, phone, and save it, and it's real easy. Then you're going to download your app, if you have a smartphone, to get that alert on your phone. Otherwise, it'll go to your home phone, you have a landline, it'll go to your landline. If you have a text, even if it's an older phone, I found out a lot of people have older flip phones, and it'll still alert to those just as long as your number is in the database.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're just trying to keep the people of Bastrop safe and notified in case of an emergency?
Yes. And like I said, there's still lots of data that needs to be updated, so we encourage everybody, please, Councilman, ask everyone you see to go to the database so we can try to get this data updated. We have 1,153 records we know right now that needs phone numbers, accurate phone numbers, emails, or texts. Anything you do to help us get it updated.
And just to know, we used our sewer database. Anyone who has water with people's water, the city has sewer, and that belongs to the city, is that correct, Ms., Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
And those sewer use fees come to the city, therefore, we had control of that database, which is the same as the water company has with your water bill, and we used that database to start with, and Ms. Doris built the database to, to collect all of that.
Now we're cross-linking and updating the data. There's still a long way to go before we can actually, if we get an alert right now, we won't have enough data. We'll have half of the data, but we want to be able to service as many people...
So so many people wouldn't be notified?
Yes, a lot of people wouldn't be notified, so we need to get that data.
Okay.
So we need to do everything we can. So you might be seeing a lot of advertisement. We're going to try to have a sign-up at the May Madness to try to people, get people signed up.
Yeah, we talked about you having a little kiosk over there.
Yeah.
So that during May Madness, people can stop by, and maybe we can demo the system to you, and, and you'd feel comfortable about that because it's all about keeping the people of Bastrop informed.
And they can also call me, because I had maybe a dozen people call, and I could sign them up right on the phone, as long as they give me permission to put it in, that's good. They can call me at 318-283-3356 to sign up also.
Okay. Gentlemen, any question about that? Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. One more announcement. Chief Crowder, can we announce this real quick? It's a short meeting tonight. It's a short meeting. Okay, Chief, you have an announcement. We applied for a USDA grant.
Yes, sir.
Some time ago, and because of the government shutdown, we missed one truck, one fire truck that we were going to get, so we, we searched and searched and found another in Alabama, is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir, it was at Brendel Fire Apparatus Company in Alabama.
Can you tell the ladies and gentlemen that's here and watching on, on, on the web about the new truck that we were able to get and what that truck will? Let's talk about the new truck, and then we'll talk about what we intend for it to do as far as our fire rating is concerned.
Okay. Yes, we acquired a 1999 engine A1 fire ladder truck, 65-foot edition that is automatic, single axle in the back. What we have now is a 75-footer with double axles, that is a standard, diesel standard truck, very difficult to operate. Getting this new truck will open up a lot of advantages for our fire guys. More guys can operate that truck, it'll be less difficult to maneuver around the City of Bastrop in neighborhoods and stuff like that. A smaller truck with advanced capabilities will make our firefighting efforts a lot better, and this newer apparatus has a lot of bells and whistles on it that we're learning right now. We started as soon as we got it, training with it, all the guys are training with it right now. It's going to be a real good help to us, and hopefully to help saving y'all property loss and stuff like that, because it'll allow us to have so much more capabilities of getting more water to scenes and stuff like that. So it's, it's a big, it's a big advantage to the city.
How far will that, that ladder? The ladder itself is 75-foot, right?
That is, it's a 75-foot ladder, and it can, we can reach the top of any, any structure that, that is around here in Bastrop, you know. Maybe the only thing that we can't get to the top of is the water tower, but we can get close to the top of it with that ladder. That, that makes us be able to, any large structure, hopefully never the hospital or something like that, we could set that truck up and attack a fire and put gallons and gallons of water in that fire with that truck.
Last question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Last question. What do you think this, in our plan, we have a master plan toward getting our fire rating, you know, it was a two about 10 years ago. It was a two, and we slipped to a three and then a four.
Oh, yes, yes.
And now we're trying to get to a two. First, because safety to save lives, but second, the added benefit is that if we get to a two, then we expect people's property insurance, businesses and residents, to be reduced by maybe up to 20%.
Yes.
So this should save millions in the aggregate for our citizens, but that's not going to occur until about 2020.
Until 2020.
When we go through our next rating.
We're, we're going to be working with the truck to bring it in, and, and yes, it will help the rating because in the near future, we should be able to get a crew to operate that truck and, and bring it to all structure fires and, and all emergencies. So that will add that much more points to our, our rating schedule.
Yes.
You know, so that's always an advantage.
Okay. Thank you so much, but we thought we'd get that. So if you see a ladder truck, it's called Ladder 1. If you see it rolling around the city, that's, that's what that's about. Item four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Is there anyone that have a comment on any item that's on the agenda? Item five, approved previous minutes, regular meeting, February 14th, 2019. Gentlemen.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February...
Motion made by Councilman Shaw.
Second. Second motion.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Moore, that we approve those minutes. Any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee report, Resolution 19-1824, Bills and Claims for the month of February 2019. Mr. Locke.
Mayor, I move that we accept the Bills and Claims for the month of February 2019.
Finance Committee Chair Locke has recommended that we, or has moved that we adopt this resolution.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Revenue and expense report, December, Jan., and January 2019.
Mayor, you don't have to have any action, it's just a report, and in our minutes that y'all received it.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item eight, Ms. Tiffany Bayless. Ms. Bayless, are you here? Okay. Please come up and state your name and your address for the record. We're glad to have you today. And, and state your reason for being here. Take your time. Just take your time, please. Welcome.
My name is Tiffany Bayless, 8875 Carbon Plant Road, and we, as a community, are here together against the USDA housing.
Okay.
Being built.
Yes, ma'am.
I have something I want to read to kind of keep my thoughts together.
Okay.
How to write it down. On November 8th, 2018, the vote was no to the building of the low-income housing under the title of USDA Ag Housing, New Municipal Center. These same owners are now trying to snowball our community of residents by trying to sneak this in by all of us to the point that it is too late to petition and have our say and vote in what happens to our community. We were only aware of this after surveying stakes were driven in the ground, and we started to question what was taking place. The new location is just around the corner from the newly-built Section 8 housing near the end of Nouth. They are planning to add 20 houses from Daisy Street and Roger Phrasing in Nouth. This is too many Section 8 houses in one area. Do you know there are 11 low-income housing apartment complexes, which contain 544 affordable apartments for rent in Bastrop? Many of these rental apartments are income-based housing with about 237 apartments that set rent-based on your income. There are 115 project-based Section 8 subsidized apartments in Bastrop, and 307 other low-income apartments that do have rental assistance but are still considered to be affordable housing for the low-income families. There is an overabundance of this type of housing in Bastrop, and businesses tend not to, to move to communities with large number of government housing developments. Many of us are concerned in what is going to do to our property value, how Nouth is going to be further damaged, and not only more traffic on a daily basis, but with the construction vehicles coming in and out during the build. Nouth is already deplorable shape, and no one wants to spend the money to improve the road. You will lose a small SUV and some of the holes in the road. The residents in the neighborhood of Elmwood, Woodlawn, Carbon Plant, and Nouth worked hard for what they have. They paid their monthly mortgage and sacrificed time away from their family, blood, sweat, and tears to provide for their families and give them a nice home and a nice subdivision, and one small group wants to come in and take that away from them. I personally worked three jobs as a single mom to provide for myself and my children. I worked to pay the mortgage on my home, pay my bills, put food on the table, and clothes on my children's back. Today, we're trying to take that away, what I worked so hard for. Yes, reducing my property value by bringing in low-income housing is taking away from me and my children. My neighbors worked hard for what they have, and why should we be the ones to lose what is rightfully ours? Low-income housing brings in more crime in our community. The overall crime rate in Bastrop is at 298% higher than the national average. We had 1,510 violent crimes and 9,429 property crimes in Bastrop in 2018. If you're in Bastrop, you have a 1 in 66 chance of having your life threatened every year, and a 1 in 10.6 chance of being robbed or having something you own vandalized. In 2018, there were two murders, three rapes, 29 robberies, 119 assaults, 465 burglaries, 717 thefts, 38 auto thefts, and three arsonists. That is some scary numbers. Out of the 29 robberies, 119 assaults, 465 burglaries, and 717 thefts, and 38 auto thefts, how many do you think were committed by a law-abiding citizen that works every day to pay mortgage, bills, food, and provide amenities for themselves and their family? The citizens that work hard for what they have are the ones that are victims of what you're allowing to happen by adding more low-income housing. What is bringing in more low-income housing in our community doing for Bastrop and Morehouse Parish? True, it is padded in the pockets of the owner of the housing complex, but in all reality, they are the only ones benefiting from this housing unit being built. There are not, they are not building these to help the community, they are doing it to help themselves. They get paid full price for each apartment by the renter and the government. When is Bastrop Morehouse Parish going to say enough is enough and wake up? We need revenue, we need tax-paying, law-abiding citizens who want to better our city and our parish. We need to be Bastrop proud. The only way this will happen is if we rally together and stand up for a better Bastrop. We're tired of the low-income Section 8 USDA housing. We want businesses, industry, and a future for Bastrop and Morehouse Parish. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Gentlemen, any comment? Mayor Hawkins is in, was in Alexandria today, and he could not be here, and he apologized, but he did ask that we relay that these houses are for people who are working in the agriculture business, and they are employed, they have to be employed by someone like DG Foods or Conagra, or, or in, in the farm industry. They're not for immigrants, they're people just passing through. They're for people who are residing in Morehouse Parish, so he did want that to be known, that it's not for just anyone. They have to be working in the agriculture industry, like fossil farms and, and Farmville or DG Foods, or working for someone like the Kennedy Rice, or someone like that who will be employed and get up and go to work every day. So I think that's why the council entertained this, and so, thank you, though, for doing your research, and we hope those numbers improve, Ms. Bayless. We hope that next year, if you come up here, you won't be able to quote those, but it's going to take time for us to get a handle on crime. We've got a 38% dropout rate between 8th grade and 12th grade here in Bastrop, and the majority of the crime that we have is from, from people who don't have any type of marketable skill, who dropped out of school. We have a particular problem there with dropouts, and we're trying, even from the city, to do all we can to get people GEDs. Ms. Ora Evans, right down the road. We have Aztec software that's free to anyone who might want a GED. It's called a Hiset now, and we offer that service free of charge, and we can sign you up right here in City Hall, we can take you in, and we can log you in, and we show you how to use the software, and then we have help, we're working with the Community College to, to, to curb that problem and hope that we'll have help from other governmental bodies that's really responsible for the education of our children. But the city's doing all we can. My office got broken into Saturday night, Sunday morning. I went to the office before church to turn the heat off because I thought it was going to get cold, and my grandson had stored his tires from his Honda. He had these low-profile tires, and he went back to his stock tires. They were sitting outside, along with my biggest server, this is my private office, along with my biggest server, sitting outside when I got there that morning, and Aaron's Rent had been hit, and, and a beauty shop next to Aaron's Rent, and I'm in that same proximity within six blocks. So I'm a victim also, that's the fifth time someone's been there. We took, we did catch, the police did catch the people who did it before, and they were dropouts. The two times that we caught people that had broken in my office and stolen stuff, they were dropouts. They didn't have an education. So we're trying to do all we can to address this crime problem, but we know that the number-one reason for crime is people dropping out of school. These are not high school, high school graduates, they don't want to risk their high school diploma. These are not, in most cases, these are not people who've gone off to college one or two years, are going to Louisiana Delta to, or McCann to get a trade. These are people who are trapped in a life of drugs, and, I'm talking about the majority, who are trapped in a life of drug use, or, or not having marketable skills, who are desperate, and we've got to fix that problem, and the only way to fix it is to address the, the dropout problem in this town. 38%, 38 kids out of 100 that go into the 8th grade do not graduate high school in five years. Those are statistics, they're not my facts, they're facts. So, thank you, and...
Mr. Goddard.
Yes.
For the record, I want to hear when y'all voted on this, but did y'all go out and poll these people?
No.
Well, let me state that. Wait, let me... Well, let me state that, wait, let me state that now. No, we opposed... Well, I can't help it if you all aren't at the council meetings. You know, we...
We ought to the people putting this in their neighborhood to go out and poll them, Mr. Cotton.
Mr. Prater, this is what we did. We publicized the meetings, we publicized the agenda, we had such, the newspaper was here during the, when we had the, we didn't know that there was an agreement to sell city property over, by the, um, by, uh, by our park. We didn't want to have our park landlocked and lose that, we didn't want little girls playing on the, on the, uh, tennis courts or, or on the T-ball and have a lot of people in that close proximity to hundreds and hundreds of our children. So, uh, yes, ma'am, you can say something.
So you're going to put those people in my neighborhood where I'm raising my kids?
You stay 2.2 miles from that project. So it's not, you're just as close to that project as you probably are to, to, uh, as, as that project is to that...
You never had any crime in our area.
You can come, you can come, we're not, we're open here, we're open here, Ms. Bayless. We're open. I'm not, I'm not trying to defend, but the, the agreement, the agreement to sell, come on, come on, my dear, we want to, uh, we want to hear you. Now, we're not saying that it's, it's too good for over, not good enough over there, but it's good enough for NAF Street. Uh, these are houses we did not want, first of all, the sale was not legal. The agreement to option our property was not legal. So we just undid an illegal agreement, okay? Based on it not being illegal, not being legal because there was no, uh, there was no resolution from this council, from the previous council to approve the mayor signing to option a property. So, uh, I asked the council to nullify that based upon the fact that there was no process whatsoever, there was no notification, no anything. This was done, uh, in some way that, uh, that we couldn't have explained, but it wasn't a legal, uh, option. So, I asked the council to cancel it for two reasons, it was illegal first, so it had to be, it was null and void. Uh, you know, a nullity cannot stand. So I asked the council to, to, uh, nullify that and we voted to do that. And I didn't think that it was good to have with little children playing out there, you know, I spent a lot of time in, in Carter Park during the softball, the Dixie Youth and all of that. And there are little girls out there and little boys out there, plenty of them. And I just didn't think that it was a good idea to have a, a housing complex, we already have one town...
We've got one right around the corner from us.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've got a little boy and a little girl.
I understand, but I don't know whether...
Mine aren't good enough?
No, no, I'm saying, do you have any data that anyone in those two projects, I mean, not projects, but in those two developments...
No, you said it right, it's the project.
Well, well, they're nice homes.
I mean, it is, call it what it is, it's not USDA, ag workers.
No, I'm saying, but I don't know whether there's any record of anyone in those two projects that have committed a crime. I don't believe that a single soul in those two have committed a crime since they've been, I'm not defending, I'm not here to defend, I'm here to just say that we, we do consider what you're saying, I don't believe in cutting people off, uh, at meetings, I think you should vent, but we publicized the meeting before it was here, it was in the, in the newspaper, we publicized the agendas and we had just had the, the deal with, uh, not letting them go into Carter Park because first they didn't have a, a legal, a, a legal, um, option. They did not have a legal option. That option was signed and not taken before the council. These gentlemen are legislators and we have to get approval, that approval wasn't there. So that's why I brought it to the council when I discovered that. And we did stop that and they, the group agreed not to build there. So they applied. Now, the problem we have in Bastrop is that from mayor and council position and Ms. Goldman, she's our tax collector and our treasurer and our clerk, uh, we need construction in Bastrop. I don't know of a single dwelling in the last 30 years, someone saying, "I want to build a $150,000 house or an $80,000 house inside the city limits of Bastrop." We have no construction in the city of Bastrop of the type of someone, you, you do understand what I'm saying, don't you?
Henry, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the only stipulation for these people to apply for this housing is that they have a job? Is there a background check, a criminal background check done on any of these people?
I don't know, but I tell you what we'll do, we'll have Mayor Hawkins and the group come up and we'll put it back on the agenda, can we do that?
Can y'all come back when they put it back on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have a public meeting, let's have a public meeting.
Could we also have the neighborhood poll to see what they want and don't want? Because our property is going to go down in value. You're talking about building houses that cost $152,000, $200,000? Ours is going to go down in value when you put that project over there.
Townhouses, yeah. Well, let's have a public meeting. And when you all want it, just let me know when the group wants it and we'll come in here and we will have a hearing. I wanted, we tried to get the word out to people by, by announcing here that we were, uh, that they were coming and we did everything we could to let the public know so. And that was a problem that I had with the, the one over here at Carter Park.
Henry, we're not saying that we didn't, we weren't notified.
Look, we have, we have a short meeting and I'm going to cut, cut this, but come on up, Blaze. Blaze, come up to the microphone.
Steve Perry.
And I'm first name basis, uh, we've been friends for 100 years, huh?
Henry Charles.
Yes, that's right.
Blaze Domino, uh, just want to know who is reaping the monetary benefits from this,
It's a group out of Mississippi called, uh...
I mean, it's got to be somebody in Bastrop or Morehouse Parish.
From, uh, Walz, which is just south of Memphis, I think is where they, where they come from.
Yeah, and they're developing all over, they're developing all over.
So Mr. Hawkins was mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
Is he reaping benefits, financial benefits?
Well, I don't know whether he's reaching a personal benefit, but they have a, they have, they are committed to quality housing. Now, a lot of the, the apartments that you quoted are available, some are not up to, up to standard. I mean, you know, we could go and debate all of this and I'm not here to debate nor to defend, but we're open and I love dialogue. So we'll have the public meeting and can, can we do that?
Absolutely, I got one more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Mention DG Foods, do you know the percent of workers there that are inmates?
But they can't live in these houses.
Absolutely.
Right, they can't. The, the inmates, you know, cannot live in these houses, the ones that are working at DG Foods, these are, uh, let's, let's just have a public meeting, can we do that? Ms. Bayless, can you all, can you...
Can I say one more thing that...
You sure can.
If, if you go to work every day, just like I did...
Yes, ma'am.
Three jobs, you can afford to build that $150,000 house inside Bastrop city limits instead of living in something that the government's going to pay half of.
Okay.
You don't need a housing complex for that.
Okay, well, I think public hearings, public meetings, uh, you just let me know when you want to have it and we'll...
We can do it next week, I'm open.
Well, let's, let's contact them and, uh, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a public meeting, but this one's approved. So, there's nothing this council can do to, to stop this one. This one's been approved and it's, unless something happens with them, it's going to happen, but...
So what you're saying is, it doesn't matter about us and where we live and our families, that this is going to happen even though nobody asks us?
Well, Pat, Pat, Ms. Domino, the answer to that is, it was done, we gave public notice, we, we, we talked about it and, and it was published, the agenda was published.
Henry, I'm sorry, but all of us didn't get notified.
I'm sorry, dear, we will try to fix that, we'll try to fix that in the future, we'll...
And I'm like Ms. Bayless.
In the future, it may be too late.
I worked three jobs so we could have what we have.
Yeah, but there's nothing...
And I'm still working, 72 years old.
Mr. Pierre, is there anything we can do to rescind our, our agreement and permission?
This council's already approved it, an agreement has already been done, yeah, mayor.
Yes, so, let's give them a chance to state their case, because I don't have their information. Let's just do that and let's all agree to come together and let them present their plans and present who's going to be there in this type of thing.
Y'all didn't come together with us when y'all approved this.
Well, we give public notice and we don't...
Some of us work.
Yes, ma'am.
Support all the others who don't.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, Ms. Bayless. And I understand your frustration and I share your, share your, share your feeling here that...
So you wouldn't mind this being built in your neighborhood right next door to you where your grandkids play? Yes, you would have a problem with it or there wouldn't be any hesitation whatsoever.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, um, trying to put forth an argument here because we're not going to get any, let's just have the meeting, if you'll just...
So how are we going to be notified about this meeting?
You all are going to tell, you all are going to say when it's going to happen.
I thought you said we had to wait and find out when the people could be here.
Come on, it's comment time.
Mayor, let me say this.
I want to know something.
Let, let her...
I want to know what's the reason to have another meeting if y'all have already decided on your own?
On this issue, we can't rescind this, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying, this is our issue.
But it may help in the future us to develop...
Not worried about the future, we worried about right now.
The Bastrop don't have a future with y'all building this stuff, that's the whole point of this statistic that I just read off.
Everybody's talking about Bastrop.
Y'all are doing this to Bastrop by pulling everything over our eyes and not worrying about anything but what pad y'all's pockets.
Uh, none, nobody...
Oh, yes, because Bastrop will receive city tax on it, I'm not dumb.
Oh, okay, I got you, ma'am, I understand.
I did finish school.
Yes, ma'am, well, we can, I'd love to have this discourse, uh, and I wish that there was, uh, some way we could accommodate you, but we gave public notice, we called due process and, uh, public notice and we debated these things.
Was it on television?
Yes, ma'am, it's on our YouTube channel. If you go to cityofbastrop.com, every meeting, that's what this gentleman right here is a technology person is doing right now. And it was on, every meeting is on YouTube. All you do is click on the website, cityofbastrop.com, go to the city council, let's have order, please, let's, let's, let's have order, please. You, no, I'm saying, let's have order. But, but all of our meetings, and we encourage you to go, every meeting is, this lady right here puts them on, on the web, every meeting is detailed and they're easy to follow. It's like three different pages and it goes all the way back to the first meeting that we had since we've been here. And they're very easy to find.
All right, why don't y'all put it in the mailboxes? Because see, actually, I keep my daddy, he's 90 years old, I keep my daddy, he had a stroke. I've been keeping him for a year and a half.
Okay.
I don't watch television all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't do this stuff on, on the, um...
YouTube.
YouTube and all this stuff, so y'all need to put it in the mailboxes.
Yep.
If y'all can go over our heads about...
Who is your city councilman?
I live in the parish, just the thing, y'all are coming right on top of us in the parish.
I see, okay. Well, if you lived in the city, one of these gentlemen would represent you.
Well, I represent part of it.
Yes.
And I think it's unfair to them.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, and Henry, what we're trying to say is...
I wish Mr. Prater would have been at the meeting to vote that night.
And what we're saying is that, just like Ms. Bayless, and, and I know you understand this, that when you work two and three jobs...
Right.
And whether you're a single parent or not, when you come home, you are not turning on YouTube.
I fully understand.
You are washing clothes, cooking food and then you're worn out and you go to bed.
Homework, homework.
We need something in our mailboxes, we just, we just cannot go to YouTube and get information.
Well, let's, let's, let's have a public meeting and maybe we can modify... Well, well, it's not too late, it might be too late, these are just a few, these are just a few units.
There's a chain of command, everything comes downhill, I don't care who you are.
Well, let's just have a public meeting, anytime you want to have it, let's have it so that in the future, yes, ma'am, come on. Come on, come on up to the microphone, please.
Do you have an exact number of how many are going to be built?
I think it's 14.
I live right across from that.
Yes, ma'am, I think it's 14 units, I'm not sure.
Does anybody recall?
Can somebody find out?
Is it five units? It's five townhouses, I believe. With 4 each, okay, so it's 20 total residents, yes.
And there's no criminal background check on any of these people, is that right?
I'm sure there are because anytime you deal with government, anything, there are processes, but see, I can, none of us have the answers, the group has the answers, that's why I want to get you with the group because we are not, uh...
So you're not aware of what you voted yes for, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, no, Ms. Bayless, Ms. Bayless, please, hold on. Now, do we know everything about the project? The answer is no, because the people who presented it presented and asked tough questions that we had about who was going to be living there, they, they, they came here and they stood right where you're standing and they made an appeal to this council and talked about safeguards. We had other meetings individually with them to assure people that there was a rumor that it was going to be migrant workers coming through and illegal aliens and all of this coming through. We made sure there was none, going to be none of that. So we did our due diligence on that, but I want you to talk with them because you're talking to us and we don't have all the answers, I don't want to mistake something that's not true.
But you should have all the answers, you voted yes to it.
No, I can't vote, I can't vote.
Okay, everybody else voted yes, but y'all don't, except you.
I didn't vote.
Right, you didn't vote, but you voted yes to something or the majority won with the answer of yes, but yet you don't have answers to it.
Three people on the city council decided that this was going to be our life in our neighborhood, is that what y'all are saying?
That's the legislative process, it's a representative democracy, that's a representative democracy and I would hope that people in the parish that live in a close proximity would follow city government a little closer because it affects your life.
I'm too busy working.
Well, I've got to terminate this right now because we've got a limit on how long we can be here.
In all that talk and debate that y'all had when we weren't here, did nobody think to ask what the neighborhood might have to say about this?
Well, the neighborhood, all we have is inside the city limits of Bastrop, we, that's where these gentlemen represent. Naturally, we are, we are, we are, I have another friend here, come on up, come on up, but I'm going to hurry and close this.
So on one side of NAF is the city and on the other side of NAF is the parish.
And, and, NAF, NAF is not, wait, hold on, the police jury does not contact our inside-the-city people when they are doing something outside, but, uh, Fred, I'm going to let you say one quick thing and this is the last, and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On, when it was put on the agenda, one question.
Yes, sir.
Did you, did the notice say pri, the housing development off NAF? Or did it say rezoning of property off Crystal Roderick?
I don't have the answer to that, but let's, let's discuss...
Let's find the answer.
I think we did vote on the zoning.
Yeah.
I think, that's the only thing we...
The only thing y'all voted on was zoning.
Right.
But was it stated that the zoning was far, off NAF for apartments?
Well, let me be clear, and we're going to go on because we've got, we're way behind.
I know it.
Yeah, but, but let's be clear. Any resolution that the police jury, when the police jury approves some over around, um, um, is that Cooper Lake?
Where on Cooper Lake?
Somewhere over there, they've had, you know, we follow the same process that we're required to under law.
So it was not...
I don't know, I don't know, Fred, I'm just saying, I don't know.
Right, the public notice, the public notice was not that it was talking about a housing development off NAF.
I don't know the answer to that, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll get it for you. Okay, thank you so much and let's do the, sir, I can't, I can't entertain anymore, but I'm not trying to cut you off, but for time, for time's sake, because I do believe in open meetings and, and, and the people should be heard. Okay, um, thank you for your come...
So what did they do on that zoning, did they, I mean, one side of the street is in the city and one side?
Let, let, let me state...
What did we do for that zoning?
Okay, okay, let, let's get this, the, uh, one side of NAF is in the city, the NAF, the street, most of NAF Street is a state, is a, a, it's a police jury highway, we have about a mile of NAF around the industrial park. about a mile of NAF around the industrial park coming up to Marlette. The city does not maintain NAF, NAF Street. The, uh, the parish police jury is responsible for most of NAF, very little of NAF, and even South Martin Luther King from Commerce, almost all the way to, uh, to NAF is outside the city limits. Uh, the city limits is, uh, you know, people think that when they, uh, driving on Boswell or NAF, that we're responsible for those potholes. We're not. Uh, we only have a little part of that, of NAF, about a mile.
But we got some houses in the city limits on that.
On this, on the north side of NAF. On the south side, those houses are out and those houses do not pay city taxes. They, they're not in the city. We'll be glad to annex them.
But we got some in the city that's paying taxes.
Yes, on the north side of NAF. None of those people are here complaining.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They, they here. Some are right out there.
What is that? I'm saying on nor- north. Yes, you do matter. Yes, Pat, you do, you do matter, Ms. Domino. You do matter.
You got some people out there inside the city that pays taxes.
I'm saying that, that, um, we have to go on and I'll, you know, I'll talk to you until you don't, until we, we'll try to exhaust every accommodation that we can for you. Let's go on.
Mayor, one, one quick thing. We need, we need to give these folks some help.
Exactly.
Is there an alternative to...
Exactly.
I mean, we got our attorney here. We oughta...
Should be something we can do.
And if they have proceeded, we'd have a big lawsuit that the city can't stand. We, the city cannot stand a lawsuit. When we have given these people permission and they've gone and acted upon a legal, uh, document, we, the city, we can't get a suit. Yes.
Doing it, so doing it, did the council vote on giving, approving them to have...
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes. Uh, item, thank you all for coming, though, and we're willing to accommodate you in any kind of public forum because people should be heard and we want you heard. But the people who are responsible, who are the ones that can answer the questions, we want them here. 'Cause we'd be here all night. Last one, Ms. Bayless.
I know you love me.
I do.
Okay. So y'all voted on the zoning of it?
No.
So no permits have been done?
We gave them permission to do it. Okay? We gave them permission to do it. So they've got our permission and they've been doing a lot of work to do it. And if we've given them permission, we, we suffer, we could suffer a very serious legal liability to regne on what we've given them. They've done a lot of work, a lot of plans, a lot of this, that and the other. So, um, I'm just being honest with you. I'm not gonna tell you what you want to hear. I'm just gonna tell you what I believe are the facts. And I don't think we can stop it. Uh...
Think or you know you can't?
No, I don't think it.
Are you trying to get your pockets padded with these people?
You mean the city's pocket. You mean the city's pocket padded, not mine. We don't do that. No. Yeah. Yes, yes. It's getting, please, ma'am. That's it. Let's go on. I'm not trying to be rude, but we've gotta go on. Uh, revenue, let's see, item nine, Ms. Haynes, audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you, Pierre. Thank you.
All right. I'm Cindy Haynes from Hill and Zine and Company. My office is located here in Bastrop. I performed the audit for the year ending for the city for June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. We're just gonna hit some highlights tonight and then, um, if there's other questions later on, we'll get into that. Um, in, inside the report, I'll have some charts in just a moment, but just some highlights. Our total assets at the end of twenty eighteen were twenty-five million compared to almost twenty-eight million the year before, and majority of that was because of depreciation of the assets. Uh, liabilities were thirty-one thousand, I mean, thirty-one million compared to twenty million at the end of the year. Our net position, which is basically your net worth, decreased, but that's because we had a new gas play implementation, that we had to restate the long-term effects of our retirement and our, um, other post-employment benefits, health insurance, et cetera, that's offered to employees after they retire. Revenues for twenty eighteen were thirteen million, one hundred thousand compared to thirteen million, six hundred thousand. Expenses were sixteen million for twenty eighteen compared to twelve million in twenty seventeen. Um, general revenues that we can use basically for anything we need are the major revenue source of the city and those have held stable throughout the years. The city of Bastrop is running on a ten to eleven million dollar budget for many years. There's just no new revenue sources out there and, um, so that's basically what we're dealing with as far as that's concerned. Um, other fund balance at the end of the year, a lot of our fund balance is restricted for debt service because we, we don't have the cash flow. If we have a big sewer project or something, we don't have the cash flow. We have to borrow revenue, money through revenue bonds, repay that over a period of time. So at the end of the year, we had eight million dollars restricted to, to servicing that debt. The, the, all the budgets were amended. We adopted budget for the general fund, the sewer use fee fund and the sales and use tax, or not sales and use tax, the sales tax fund, which is the money that's accumulated for streets. All the budgets were amended. Uh, we had major capital assets, but majorly those were just machinery and equipment. We didn't do any major street or sewer projects for twenty eighteen. Uh, let's see. The twenty nineteen budgets, or for the fiscal year ending, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen budgets were adopted timely. Majority of the revenues and expenditures remained about the same. The expenditures were decreased somewhat. If we did have a sewer project that was ending, I think we did have a sewer project that was ending or whatever. But, um, in twenty nineteen, the budgets maybe have to amend depending on our funding for big, large sewer projects or street projects. Okay. Now going to these charts, we're just looking at the revenues and this is strictly the general fund. This is not the sales tax fund or the sewer use fee fund. But you can see that our general fund revenues were ten million dollars for fiscal year in June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. For June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, they were eleven million. You can see here at the bottom, the majority of our revenues, seven point nine million, comes from taxes. Okay. And then on the next slide, we break the same revenue source down into percentages. And you'll see that seventy-four percent of the city's revenue comes from taxes, followed by fourteen percent from intergovernmental, intergovernmental. That's money from the federal government, the state or whatever. Um, on the next page, of those general fund revenues, the seventy-five percent we talked about, the majority of those comes from sales taxes. And that number has held pretty steady over the past several years, even since the closing of GP.
IP.
I mean, IP. What did I say? GP? I don't know where I'm at. Let me cross it, I guess. Um, sales tax sixty percent and, uh, property tax is thirty-seven percent. And that has, I mean, last year, sales tax was sixty percent and average form tax was thirty-six percent. Okay. On the next, um, chart, we're gonna look at the expenditures of the general fund. And you'll see there, they're ten million also. Revenue's about ten million, expenses are ten million. Of that, twenty-six percent is spending the general fund. The general fund is just the day in and out operations of the city, city clerk's office, upkeep of the city hall, uh, just general things like that. After that comes fire at twenty-eight percent and then police at nineteen percent. And then other various categories make up the remainder. But like I said, they expended ten point eight million. Okay. Now we'll look at the budget. We had an actual expense of ten point eight million, but budgeted was eleven million. All right. The budget is in the blue, the red is the actual. And you can see that every department was pretty much in line with their budget. We didn't have any excess in any one department necessarily, more so than any other. Okay. The next chart shows you three years in comparison, twenty eighteen being the blue, twenty seventeen red and twenty sixteen being the green. And again, you'll see very little variance from year to year. Now, the sewer is gonna have a tendency to fluctuate more because, like I said, the projects that might be ongoing from one year to the next. Might have, one year you may have some projects, next year you don't have any. It just kind of bounces back and forth depending on the funding. The general fund has made some cuts. You can see there from two point eight million to about two point, I mean, from two points... No, they have risen from about two point six to about two point eight. So very little variance. Uh, the police has increased a little bit. Okay. And lastly, I have one other thing I was gonna say. Um, oh, overall, the city, I mean, they do an excellent job taking care of their money. Um, everybody's very cost-conscious, so I think they do a good job with the, the money that the citizens allow them to take care of. And also, the, um, all the persons have had very little time to review the report, so, um, we'll kinda leave it at that for tonight. And then if anybody has questions later on, after the audit becomes public records, well, then we'll go from there. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen?
I have one question. Ms., Ms. Goldman, we are back on the compliance list.
No, we're off the non-compliance. Yes, we are. Yes, sir.
So we, we, we're charging on with our grants.
Yes.
Okay.
And let, let me state that during the entire time when we were on the non-compliance list, we maintained a constant contact with the legislative auditor, with the governor's office, with every office that's affected any of the business of the city of Bastrop. So we were guarding diligently and communicating with them to let them know where we were with our response to things. So we, uh, were guarding the fort, uh, during the entire time. Any questions for Ms. Haynes and the gentleman? Okay. Ms. Haynes, is there anything you would like to say in closing?
No, just thank you for letting me be of service.
Thank you for your service. Okay. Uh, let's see, the, um, item ten, Ms...
I have an intelligent question.
Yes, she is. Ms. McLean. Um, as you gentlemen know, we had one member of the civil service board. We lost a member of the civil service board. And the civil service board is very important to the city of Bastrop. And, uh, we always seek quality individuals to, to fill these positions. Uh, Ms. McLean is extremely qualified and, uh, fair-minded and, uh, a quality individual that I'd like to present to this board to, uh, approve as our nominee, uh, for that.
I make the motion, Mayor.
I second it.
As the motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Moore, second by Finance Committee Chair Locke, that this is approved and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor and Board. I hope that I will live up to what you intend for me to do. I've enjoyed working with the city and I intend to continue. I'm retired now, so I have a little time. So I will serve on the board to the best of my ability and I thank you for your vote of confidence.
And as an added note, you were on the zoning board.
Yes.
And I see another zoning board member, maybe the chair in the audience, and we're gonna have to get a replacement. So if there's anyone out there who want to serve, we would like to know who you are. If you're willing to serve like Ms. McLean is willing to serve, then we need good people, uh, to help us here in the city of Bastrop to serve, uh, serve our citizens. Uh, thank you, Ms. McLean.
Thank you.
Um, executive session regarding ongoing litigation, and this is a suit Arnold, uh, Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, counsel. Mr. Pierre.
Pierre on there.
No, we're gonna have it in there. But we're gonna retire to executive session to discuss litigation. And all we have left is to adjourn. So in case some of you are not here when we go in and come out, we'd like to thank you for your participation. The city of Bastrop government will be transparent and we want to hear you. Uh, we welcome this kind of input, um, from you because without that, we would be flying blind. So when you want to have your public meeting, just let our office know and we'll get in touch with the other people and they can answer all of those questions that we could not answer. We respect you and yet we do love you. So we respect you.
Do it next week? Go on, get in touch with them?
Yes, ma'am. You can get in touch with them and we can do it next week. We, we can do it soon. I wish I could. Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a just quick...
Yes, ma'am, you can. Oh, I'm sorry, Dorothy. I didn't know who you were behind it, sitting behind.
It's okay. It's okay.
Okay.
I hope this isn't out of line, but I think this is something important for our community. I'm Dorothy Ford with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce is co-hosting a meeting on March the twenty-sixth with Wildlife and Fisheries to discuss Bussy Break. It's gonna be held at the Visitor Center at seven o'clock. Everyone is invited to attend, ask questions about where it stands, you know, the project and how it's progressing. Hopefully you can come there.
Uh, Ms. Ford, if you'll get with Doris, Doris, and we'll get that on our website, but give us those dates again.
March the twenty-sixth, that's on a Tuesday evening at seven o'clock at the Visitor Center. Everyone's invited.
Now, I'll say this real quick. Uh, Bussy Break was once the bass fishing spot in the entire south before there was Sam Raven Lake and before there was, um, Toledo Bend and all of those, there was Bussy Break and we were a, and, and I'm so glad that, uh, Robert Marm, our, he was our Wildlife and Fisheries State Director from Morris Parish, uh, he took that on as a special project and we knew one day we would have, they, they've done piers and they let out, they stopped Bussy, I believe, and, and they had some problems getting with the pumps and all of that, you know, those old IP pumps that pump water out of the, up into the reservoir. Uh, Bussy Break's coming back and it's gonna mean, I hope, a boom.
I do, too.
To the city of Bastrop.
And it should, for the whole parish. I think it should.
It should. So we're excited about what Bussy is gonna do. And, uh, now you're gonna have Wildlife and Fisheries there, you think?
Uh, the, the man that's over the regional office out of Monroe will be here. Ask Will somebody from Baton Rouge for Wildlife and Fisheries, just to give us an update on where it stands and then will also allow us to ask them questions.
Yes.
So I think it's a very informative meeting for, for anybody that likes to fish and is interested in Bussy Break. Do try to attend that now.
And if we all work together, we can fix the Bastrop problems.
Yes, we can.
We can fix them.
Stay positive.
We're not so large that we can't fix this, but we need an entire community pulling in the same direction. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
We need a motion.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Not adjourn.
Well, go into executive session. Thank you, Ms. Goldman.
Second.
Okay, the mo- move, it's been moved by Councilman Green, second by, uh, Committee Chair, uh, Locke, that we go into exec- executive session and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will go into executive session and we'll be right back.